All behind, so Buzz, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Feel pressure, won't these people?
(laughing).
Okay, non-public meeting minutes from February 20th, 2025, and February 13th and 20th.
Make a motion to accept the non-public meetings for February 20th and February 13th, 2025. Second?
Okay, motion by Carol, second by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Would entertain a motion to seal the non-public minutes from tonight's...
I make a motion to seal the non-public minutes from the first session of the non-public minutes, because we're probably going to do some more later from tonight's meeting, because determining the devoutness of this information likely would affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of this board or render an imposed action ineffective. Sir?
Okay, motion by Carol, second by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Les, would you like to move the consent agenda along last time?
Well, I would, but I'm gonna have to read it off of there again, because my... Thank you. That's it. I shouldn't be able to get it right tonight.
You want it here? No?
No. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda for 3625, accounts payable payment manifested at 2/25/25, accounts payable payment manifested at 3/5/25, payroll payment manifested at 2/27/25, and then use change tax for MAPLOT 201-003 in the amount of $8,800. Then use change tax for MAPLOT 217-102 in the amount of $8,500. Distribution of funds from the town building maintenance fund in the amount of $9,729.32. Transfer of funds from the water department's operating fund to the town's general fund in the amount of $19,041.35. Transfer of funds from the sewer department's operating fund to the town's general fund in the amount of $15,637.86. Tax deferral for MAPLOT 112-101 in the amount of $1,731.22. And elderly exemption for MAPLOT 116-024 in the amount of $30,000.
Second? Second.
Okay, motion by Les, second by Carol to accept the consent agenda for 3625. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. All right. Town Report dedication. So unfortunately, this gentleman could not be here with us tonight, but I believe we have a few of his family members in the house, and certainly plenty of us that have worked with him over the years.
Yeah, some of his fans.
Some of his fans, exactly, so. This was a pretty easy one to come up with this year. So I'm gonna read the dedication. It's a little long-winded, but anybody watching can see who it is. So Walter Waring, the report is dedicated to him this year. So Walter has served town for a number of years in a few different capacities, but I'm gonna go ahead and read the dedication from the town report. Each year, the select board makes a difficult decision on who they feel should be recognized for their contributions to the town and community. Whether those contributions were quiet behind the scenes or enthusiastically in the limelight, it is not an easy task, as Bristol has been graced with many volunteers and members of the public who love and support Bristol in many ways. To keep this recognition, this year's recognition a surprise, the recipient was led to believe he was being interviewed as a leader for a research paper. When asked to participate in the interview, his response was, "I am not much of a leader. I am more of a reluctant leader."[288.14][288.17](laughing). And he recommended interviewing other members of the public. Though he was happy to chat, it took a little encouragement to get him to participate. Throughout his life and dedication to Bristol, the title of reluctant leader could not be further from the truth. The interviewer, Shannon Wharton, reported that it was an honor to sit down with this year's town report dedication recipient, Walter Waring. She added that listening to his stories and as he reminisced about the town of Bristol, which he holds dear, was a wonderful opportunity. Walter has been a member of the community since he was a few months old. Walter's father and uncles, who were in the military and overseas during World War II, moved the family from Massachusetts to Alexandria around 1948. His family purchased property in Bristol, and he has been a member of the community ever since. Walter attended Northeastern for a short time before they recommended that he enlist in the Air Force. He enlisted, but was eventually medically discharged due to a pre-existing condition from a SARS injury. I'd like to hear that story.[349.75][349.78](laughing). Walter's unique career spans from working at Kodak from 1963 to 1966 as a doubler who managed the gelatin used in photographic films to attending Peterson School for Engineering, obtaining a certification to become a first-class stationary engineer. He was employed at Danvers State Hospital in Walthem Hospital, and later at Chestnut Hill Pumping Station in Massachusetts in 1974. Walter, scoring 117 points on the test, obtained his license to work at one of the wastewater treatment plants. He is also the last person to know how to run the largest reciprocating steam engine built by MIT in 1989. Walter stated he had other certifications throughout his career, including one as an electrician, but preferred, as preferred has always been, a stationary engineer. Though he loved his jobs, he shared a... Excuse me. Though he loved his jobs, he shared that he counted down the days until retirement, where he did not have to drive I-95 anymore.[416.85][416.88](laughing). Walter and his wife Susan were married on a birthday on June 30th, 1981. He mentioned how they celebrate over four years of marriage this year. They dated while Susan was in college, and shortly after she invited him to her college graduation, they were married. Though he never had children of his own, he treated Susan's two daughters, Linda and Stephanie, like they were his own. Walter was part of several organizations over his lifetime: master of the lodge and engineer with the Masonic Lodge, president of the Steenobale Club in Hebron, a member of the Union Lodge, Hockington Lodge, and Mount Hollis, and his role as member of the Bristol Budget Committee since 2017. When he asked what made him get involved with the community, Walter said, "I always hated to see empty spots on the ballots." Walter talked about how proud he was to vote and to get others out to vote that may not so otherwise. Other reason for his involvement was that people, was the people. He added that Bristol was there when his family went through some tough times. The people of Bristol helped us through it. When asked what his definition of leadership was, Walter answered, "Someone who puts in effort into what needs to be done." Through his leadership, he has brought much to his family, friends, and community. Walter stated he jumps in whenever something is needed, whether in church, community, or wherever it is. He had that attitude in his career, his family life, and his role in the budget committee. Walter talked about being vocal and standing up at town meetings, fighting for the town to get a new ladder truck and library addition, and noting that he was against the Public Safety Building at the time, only but, only until both the truck and addition were paid off so the taxpayers would not feel the burden. Walter is vocal when it comes to what he is passionate about and what he feels is right. He is a very vocal advocate and supports the services provided to senior citizens and residents of Bristol. He also talked about other residents or committee members, although they may share a difference of opinion in voting, he considers every one of them his friend. Walter's resiliency, demeanor, and view of life and community are exactly what the select board has chosen Walt, is exactly why the select board has chosen Walter Waring as this year's dedication. It is with great pleasure that the board honors Walter Waring.[572.98][573.01](applause). I strongly recommend, if anyone ever has to read anything that long in public, that they read it beforehand.[587.02][587.04](laughing). And bring your reading glasses, if you don't have them. Is anyone from Walter's family here?
Hi.
I'm his sister-in-law.
Oh, okay. Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
I wish Walter could have been here. Pretty much my entire tenure, either on the Budget Committee or on the Select Board, has been working with Walter, so Walter and I get along great, even though we've butted heads a few times, so. But yeah, no, it's too bad he couldn't have been here.
Be honored.
Yeah. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Just it's a pleasure serving with him on the Budget Committee, but his passion is inspiring.
Yep.
Yeah. You don't often see people in public forums that wear their heart on their sleeve and put their emotions out like he does, and I think that's a great thing. It's a really good thing.
Yep, it certainly does. And hope to see him up at Ragged again next year.[651.02][651.04](laughing). He told me not this year, but maybe next year.[655.62][655.65](laughing). So Walter, I can't remember, I don't remember exactly how old Walter is now, but he still had it a couple of years ago up there, so enjoys every minute of it.
Yeah, I think he broke his leg and then he hit skiing. I think he's 82.
Oh, wow.
But I'm not certain.
Yeah. I hope when I'm 82, I still wanna...[678.85][678.88](laughing).
You probably won't want to be in the Budget Committee.
I probably won't. I guarantee you I won't be in the Budget Committee at 82. That I promise. I will go away. I promise. But yeah, so.
There are cupcakes and town reports up front for those who want them.
Anybody gonna see Walter to bring them up?
Would you like me to do that tomorrow?
I'd say bring them. There's some cupcakes.
Yeah, and a town report.
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And then, but anybody else who wants cupcakes or town reports, feel free to grab them up front as well, so.
You wouldn't see him tonight, would you?
No, not tonight. No, yeah, he cuts it early.
Yeah.
Well, thank you both very much for coming.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for having us.
And thank Shannon for a good job.
Yep.
And I know it was long-winded, but I wrote up like a six to eight-page paper for my leadership class last term, and I used that format. I know my mother, who worked for 40 years for the city of Manchester, so the same format.[746.41][746.44](laughing).
Well, I apologize for screwing up reading.
No, you're right.
My reading glasses are in the front. I have to get those down, so.
Cupcakes now, we're moving on.
Yeah, everybody, do you want to take a quick second, get some cupcakes?
If you want to, sure. Everybody have some cupcakes.
Get some cupcakes.
There's also cookies, so.
Oh, yeah.
And everyone, Christine and everyone that was involved deserves a lot of gratitude from all of us.
Yeah, and most, you know, most notably Chief LaRoche was essentially the project manager of overseeing the construction of a commercial building and the fire chief at the same time. So, he's probably happy to be back to work on his normal duties now and not the headaches of commercial construction, so.
Did you see that earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And I would add, for those that have never been in, I got a tour just a little while ago because I was in here this summer for the opening. It is, it is a premier facility. It's quite amazing. It really, it's really, and, and what you guys have done inside to set it up and, and they did a lot of work on keeping, not spending money, keeping the racks for the equipment and it's, it's really, it's worth. I, I don't know if you have people coming for tours, but if any of you ever have an opportunity and the chief will let you, it's worth going and taking a walk around for sure.
We just asked that you schedule them ahead of time.
Yep.
Or just stop it. Weekday date now.
All right, well, I was getting it from the other side of the building.
Yeah, you may not get it from that side.
All right, so, special presentation, now that we know a special recognition. Christine, I'll turn that over to you, I guess.
I didn't really write anything, but we started a practice with the Department of Shawn to do something special for the, this is the last board meeting technically, for Les Dyson and Carol Brown. So, they, this is their last meeting, but there will be a town meeting, so we can heckle them there. But we decided to do something similar to what we did with Shawn. We changed it up a little bit. You can't take them home tonight because we need your stamp next week, but we wanted to give you these to recognize both Carol and Les for their time on the slide board. I'll let you show people.
That's very cool.
Thank you. That's where our line is.
That's where my sign is.
So, we did have.
Should I get another one?
Should we, well, if she keeps it.
I have to bring him back in.
So if Shawn is elected, then Shawn has to bring his back in because we don't want to.
That's great. And in true government, in fashion, we get to take our own stamp.
Yes, that's awesome.
We could get a nice picture.
Yeah, if you want to get, uh, yourself and the.
Yeah, even, I mean, you want to do one with the board that's here tonight and then, yeah. You, where, Kate, where do you want it? Um, we, we just thought it would be nice to recognize the service that people have done on the board because they, it's sometimes not a very thankful job and they've done a great job, so.
It's a lot of effort.
Can you send me one of those? I can stand here. That might have been. We need to keep your stamp one more week and then, so we need to keep your stamp one more week. Because we have a manifest next week, but you can keep them if you want your desk.
Unless you want to come in and sign the manifest.
Unless you have to sign.
That's okay.
The thing we did a little different than Shawn's is we actually have these new seals. I figured that would get a little bit comments.
When I leave, I want the old town seal, please. I didn't say that.
So, but.
That's if you voted in.
Thank you both personally. I've, not only have I enjoyed working with you, but it's nice to have the, the wisdom imparted from both of you during our meetings and it's, it's been, literally it's been a pleasure working with you. So, and Les, I, as those of you that come to any meetings, no less generally keeps me in line and that's not gonna be, uh, I'm gonna be off the leash on the next, on our next meetings.
Put like something in your ear like.
How about you sit at home and we'll get a remote shot caller and you can do your shot.
She'll be watching it on YouTube.
No, but in, in, in all seriousness, Les is kind of my voice of reason in this position, so when I start getting heated up, she brings it back down, so, thank you. All right, I think the moment you've all been waiting for. Eighty-five Lake Street bid review and discussion, so for those watching, we all know the, we've had, there's been a lot of discussion over.
Do you want me to put the Excel up and try and just?
I can read it off and put it up.
Yeah, because it's got people's emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Yep.
Um, so, as you all know, we moved out of the old fire station last August and the board made the decision to sell the building. And this process is kind of dragged out, so I apologize for that, but just due to some legal issues and as far as, there's, there's actually two properties there and not just one. And just determining how exactly we were gonna sell the building, we, it took us a little longer than we would have liked. So that said, we have received a bid list. And this is going to be, Christine, do you have the specific map lot numbers?
Yeah, one, one thirteen twenty-four and one thirteen twenty-five. It's right here. Just make sure my memory is right. Yep, one thirteen twenty-four and one thirteen twenty-five.
All right, so the property located at one thirteen, map lot one thirteen twenty-four and one thirteen twenty-five, which is the adjoining property. So we received a total of eight bids. I'm going to just go in no particular order here. I'm gonna read off each bid. So the first bid, Robert Kitter of Lakeshore Drive in Franklin, three hundred and one thousand dollars. The second bid, Ben Robinson of Fowler River Road in Alexandria, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Shady Maple Properties LLC of Old Bristol Road in New Hampton, five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Robert and Erica Wilson and John Shackett, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Excuse me, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and one cent. Lake Sunday Baptist Church, one thousand two hundred dollars. Shawn Patrick Demers, five hundred thousand and one dollars. George Neder, two hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. And David Dyer, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. So, the top, the highest bid being Shady Maple Properties LLC at five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So, I would make a motion that we accept the bid from Shady Maple Properties LLC for five hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the sale of eighty-two, eighty-five Lake Street, map lot one thirteen twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, I have a motion by Carol Brown, a second by Les Dyson, to sell the property located at eight-five, eighty-five Lake Street, map lot one thirteen dash twenty-four and one thirteen dash twenty-five in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars to Shady Maple Properties LLC. Any discussion?
I would just add that I, I had a comment from a citizen saying, why are you having sealed bids with the insinuation that there was some kind of a secret process going on here, but sealed bids are sort of a normal, a normal process, so none of us, none of us saw this until we walked in here tonight.
Yeah, we walked in the door and saw this, so. So, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations, Ryan and Keeper. Uh, one caveat to the sale, and I'm sure you guys won't have an issue with this. There is a plaque on the front of the building dedicated to Ken Brown that for his efforts in having that building construction, constructed in the mid-seventies, we've spoken with members of the family who still are active in town and have property in town. And we as a town would ask that that plaque remain, remain in place or be turned back to the town. So if any renovation takes place, please return it to the town and we'll find a place for it at the, at the new fire station. So, but they were happy to, if the building remains in its current state without being renovated, they're happy to leave it there as a tribute to him, so. So, congratulations.
I'm just gonna add, I've sent everything previously to the town's attorney. I'm just waiting on a purchase and sales agreement and an updated deed. I haven't gotten the back just yet. It, it may not be back until next week, but I'll make sure to get something out to you as soon as possible. Do we have anything left in the building? We do?
That'd take ten minutes to get.
Okay, yeah. So we'll just make sure to get the rest of our, our stuff out of the building too and then I'll go from here.
Touch base with me next week and we'll get that form four box out of there and.
Thirty minutes.
Do you mind if I ask just a member of the public, can you share with us what your vision is, what the building's gonna be used for? I mean, you don't have to, but I'm sure other people are real, I know I am really interested.
Yeah, so we have a automotive lift business currently that we can easily use it for.
Oh, I'd be, yeah.
Yeah, and we've also, we started importing cars from England.
Okay.
So we're hoping to make it a vintage, kind of the whole feel.
Well, they had shady farmers didn't tell me that.
Not putting a fire there, Paul.
Welcome to Bristol, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Okay.
You can all leave if you want.
Congratulations.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you. So if I get an answer, as soon as I get an answer, I'll get something out to you.
I'll come see you tomorrow.
I'll be, I'm not gonna be long. So, but I'll be.
Maple Farms, I'm thinking of. Sorry, bro, I don't know if I was out of place, but I mean.
No, you're fine, you're fine. No, and I, it wouldn't, I don't think it would have been really appropriate for one of us.
No, that's great.
Oh, you didn't know either? I thought you guys all.
Well, I, I personally added ninety because I, I, because of my friendship with them, but that's the only reason.
Gotcha.
So. Uh, town meeting prep and warrant article assignments.
So there's a couple of documents in your folder. There's one, let's label it slide board folders for town meeting. This is the one where we go through. This is, I, like, I put, I haven't put anything here because hopefully there are no errors. But I would add them in there and then introduce town administrator department heads. I've listed them out for whoever's going to do that at town meeting because we usually do do that. And then for the slideshow, I put in, in case, in case you want to point that out at the beginning or the end, wherever you want to point that out about the dedication, the in-memory for the people of the town meeting. So your first article, I, these, do not look at these numbers. I still have to update things on the bottom, so I'm gonna hide that. But with, this is where we want to talk about, is it the budget committee that's gonna move second and speak to the article? Because this is the budget warrant article.
I have to be here.
I think given the amount, I mean, how much amount of work I, how much, I don't know.
Sure.
Given the amount of work that I know Paul has put into this, I would like to see Paul move it.
If he's willing.
If he's willing and if you folks would agree.
And just, and then whoever's second it and then Paul would speak to it as well, so, okay. I'm just updating as I go along here.
Then we certainly have your back if he needs, so.
One of us could second it.
Again, it doesn't, or if somebody from the budget committee wants to.
I would just leave it that way for now, but so somebody can always speak up. So I, I, my key points, I'm like, because the numbers aren't right and I don't want people to get confused by them. My key points that I'm gonna, was gonna update is the same things kind of that I did the year, um, last year. What the budget increases and the percent, which I think Paul's also done in his town report submission. And then what percentage of that is attributed to increase in wages. I did similar to last year. What percentage is health insurance increases and what percentage debt and interest increases? And then what the, and what percentage attributed to the water and sewer, having the capital reserve increase there? And then whatever's remaining. Is there anything else you'd like to see broken down?
You know, I, I think Paul has a very good handle on, you know, on all the details, so I kind of trust him to.
We usually prepare our notes too.
Yeah. And maybe you guys could get together ahead of town meeting, but I don't think there's anything that we as a board need to put in. You know, we're, we're happy with the work that you folks have done and, and thank you for the time it's put into it, so.
Um, what is WA? I know, I should know this.
Warrant article.
Oh, oh, jeez.
Is it, where, oh yeah, warrant article, sorry. Um, this, so I'm gonna try to do them same time. This is the, this is, I have to get more picture on the main page unless we're good with just.
Oh, this is the slide.
Yeah, so unless we're good with just the public safety building.
It's fine.
Okay. Um, town report dedication, there's your memory, there's your special recognition. Article, and then usually we just have that flagged in there, articles one through eight, election.
Is this not a show of results?
What?
Results of the two.
No. Unless I could get them for her maybe, but.
Oh, you could.
We didn't have them in there before, but I might be able to put them in.
Ned, Ned reads all of those.
Yeah, he does, so.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then there's the budget article. The one, I have to fix this, but for every, it's gonna be whatever that number is. For every fifty-six thousands added or subtracted, the tax rate is estimated to increase or decrease by ten cents. For every five hundred sixty thousand, I think, don't quote that number, whoever's listening, because that is not the exact number. I have to get that. But it would go up, increase or decrease by a dollar. And again, those estimates are based on no other changes. That's in a vacuum, so, but we use them when we estimate what the tax impact will be. So that's the art, article nine, jumped down. Article ten is your contingency fund. Um, I've updated some, some of the notes on here, but who would like to move it?
Anybody want to? Um, I'd, I'd be happy to because I have, as long as I have a, a good clear conversation with the town administrator before to make sure I know what I've.
Okay, Carol, it is?
Um, second.
Second can be whoever. We don't have to.
I can.
We do put it in front of you with the second.
Oh, we do, all right.
Because people forget when they're saying these things, so. Um, who wants, and so who wants to speak to it? Oh, so do you want the person who motions to be the person who speaks to it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, so.
Yeah, that's what we've done before.
Scott, can I make a suggestion? I like, I like Ned's idea to try to get as many people within minutes as possible. So I like you being, you can ignore me because this doesn't matter, but I would say wait a second and see if someone from the public seconds it. If no one speaks up, then go ahead and do that, but that's a way to get someone else's name within minutes.
I mean, it's up to you, it's totally up to you guys. You can wait and do that. We do do these assignments.
I, I get what you're saying.
Just to keep the.
You'd rather just keep moving? Let's keep moving. There's plenty of other opportunities.
They may expect that.
We do the assignments.
And that's the thing, they don't expect that, so. Okay, so that's article ten. So Carol and Scott.
Key points I just put here so far is just that we use it for unanticipated expenses in the year. Twenty twenty-four, we use five hundred of it for processing fee for the bond anticipation note. And twenty-four five is for return to the general fund. No tax, estimated tax.
That's not gonna be on the slide, is it?
No, this is your books only.
Yeah.
Um, the slide, I'm doing both at the same time.
It's on the TV now.
The slide is plain. Well, so we usually do disclose how much we spend out of it, so, but that's just.
But I'm just saying, I don't want that information.
On the slide, no.
Yeah, okay.
This is your books, so, and then no, no estimated tax impact, however note this will lessen the amount that can be applied to the taxes when the tax rate setting occurs. So that's basic. Is there anything?
Yeah, it's, it's not that we're trying to hide anything. I just don't want to create confusion.
Right, so that's your slide. It's just plain.
Okay, so article eleven?
Um, that should, I'll show you the slide first. That's plain.
I'll take that unless you want.
No, go ahead. You can take it. I'll second it.
Oops, I was gonna update, but I'm happy with it.
Uh, no, don't, give us, give us.
What are you saying? I didn't hear, sorry. Article eleven, motion?
Let's, we'll do it.
No, the, and the only reason I said it was just.
You love to.
And you must be.
Haven't dealt with parlor technical.
Well, we're always gonna move it. I will second it.
Okay, and then who's speaking to it?
I will.
Okay, those are the bullets so far.
We'll discuss that after.
But I have a budget that we, so the fireworks committee met yesterday and we came up with a preliminary budget. I'll have that in the binder. I'll let you know what it is.
Yeah, of course, the guy speaking to it failed to even show up to the meeting, so. I looked at my phone this morning and thought it was more new fireworks committee meeting, which happened yesterday.
Would you rather not put the bullets up on the screen right now because those are sort of guidance for us and they may change?
These are correct.
Are you okay?
I think we should all review them individually.
Do you want me to take this off the screen and just do slides and you?
Just do the slides for now, that's fine, yeah, because like.
They are in your laptop, so if you want to pull them up and look at them.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody can.
The O seven S B folders.
Yeah, we, we have the notes. Everybody should take the responsibility upon themselves to know what they're talking about when they open, speak to it.
And part of why we do this is also in case there's something else you want in here.
Yep.
Um, so the, I will make sure that the full budget is in here and the estimated tax impact will be calculated in, on this page too.
Article twelve should be done, I think, unless anybody. Then what will he ask for?
Don will motion?
Yep.
Um, do you?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. And who will speak to it?
Don.
Don too, okay.
Well, he could do the rest of these. He's not here.
Oh, that's right, he's motioning. Yeah, that's right, he's motioning. Um, I, so the plan for that is to have your, the capital improvements plan, do you want that in the slideshow? We did it last year, but it was too hard to see. So we put this, we put the capital improvements plan as your next page, but it was really too hard to see. Um, we also put in our folders, we put where, what amounts each of them are at. But is there some, anything you want in the slideshow or in your folders? And I don't vote by those numbers. I have to fix them.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head. Uh, yeah, I would get with Don on that because he would.
I mean, we have had some conversation that due to the economic situation, this is probably low at this point.
Yes.
In the future, starting next year and maybe going up, but we may not have to bring that up, but just.
Um, next one, article thirteen, uh, generator. Um, I'd be happy to move it and I would just want to have, or if somebody else does, is I would, my recommendation would be to have an in-depth discussion with Chief LaRoche about it ahead of time.
Which, can he speak to it?
He can if he wants to. He's already got one that he's gonna have to, so. You want him? Perfect, all right. Whoever wants to move it, move it.
I'll move it. So Les is gonna move it, Scott's gonna second, and then. Chief, well, is there anything you want in here or just leave it the warrant article and let Ben speak to it? Is there anything?
Just leave it, let him deal with it. Same, same with article fourteen.
So, um, who's?
And I would just say if, if anything comes up, the select board is, one of our, again, I know I flog this dead horse all the time. One of our most important tasks is to make sure that we provide services in an emergency twenty-four seven for the citizens and that's what, all of us as well.
And another thing too is while we're looking at these, I just want to make sure there's no last minute questions that you think we need to be prepared to answer. Because I think that there's been some, as people have been thinking about these after we voted on them, some other questions may have come up and I just want, that's one other reason I'm doing this.
Yeah, no, everybody has the opportunity to speak up, so. So Carol, you want to move fourteen?
Sure, I would as a, I'd get a fire.
That's for the four firefighters.
Yeah, let Karen close it up.
You don't have to speak to it.
You don't speak.
You turn it to Ben.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Um, who's gonna second?
I'll second it.
And that one will speak to it. Are there any specific questions or preparations you want for this?
No, I think that's gonna be Alda. Alda.
Carol Brown, did you have any questions?
We'll see if we get you a stipend as a.
I talked about something the other day. Should I bring that up?
I, yeah, I think you should because I think the, the only way we're gonna do, I don't want to be unprepared for town meeting and I don't want you to have that question at town meeting if you have it now. Great, do you agree? If he has a question now, he should be bringing.
Yes.
So, having heard this over a number of years and not too, and fairly recently from someone, we've had a long conversation about, we have a contract, we provide this service, we need to do this and we're all good with it. But the question has come to me about, why are we doing that at all? And to be ready for that. Why are we serving other towns?
We get it every year.
We get it, so we need to be prepared.
Subsidizing.
Somebody.
Yep.
Our own emergency services essentially.
I'm just, you don't have to explain to me, I'm just saying, we, we all need to be aware that we might need to be ready to answer that in some fashion.
I would, I would love to just service our town and have four guys on shift and full-time chief and a full-time deputy, but we can't afford to do that, so we gotta figure out a way to do that.
This is, I, you don't have to, you don't have to convince me.
No, no, I know, it's, it's easy, it's, but they can't, so.
Ben is working on a PowerPoint, a narrated PowerPoint. We're hoping to post it on the news page, news items in Facebook tomorrow. That it talks about this, this article a little and gives people a little bit more information about it. Technology does hate him, so. But we will, we will hopefully have that up there soon.
All right, article fifteen, cemetery expendable trust fund. Does anybody want to move that?
Scott's turn.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, that's right, Don, we have one.
Second?
Second, Don?
Um, I think Richard Leflamme may want to speak to it. I'm not sure how, how he's doing, so, um, is there, is there anybody who wants to speak to it?
Scott's moving it, so Scott can speak to it.
I can add key points while we're doing it. It's really, it's coming from the general fund. It was two lots that were sold.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yes, so.
He's just, yeah. As long as he's attentive, he's more capable.
And the reason we do have to do this fund is because we don't have one and so we need to create this fund so we'll be selling new lots in the future. We need to take care of it, so.
All right, article seventeen.
Um, sixteen.
Six, six, oh, sorry, sixteen. Just put, if you want to put Don down for it, because Chris is gonna have to speak to it.
Yep, I've asked Chris for some key points that we can add into the select board folder too, so, Don will motion.
I'll second.
Second, and Christine, speak to it.
That's probably gonna generate some conversation.
Uh, article seventeen. Does anybody want to speak to that?
I, 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 let me move it and.
Sure.
My recommendation is to have Paul be able to speak to it. I can reach out to him, but it's up to you guys.
If you'd like to speak on it, Carol.
Um, I, I, I would speak in favor of it and that would be a good thing coming from me because I know everybody speak against the energy, it's not frequently, so. But Paul, I think Paul should take the.
Okay.
Paul should take a lead, but I, if, if, if he doesn't want to, I would be happy to.
I'll second that if you want.
Okay.
Uh, eighteen, I can take that if you want.
Is there, do you want the quotes for, you want the quote for it in the packet?
Yeah.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay.
Nineteen, let's put a bill over Don since he's not here.
I think, well, Don's the one who put this on.
Yeah.
And, well, I wanted it, then he put it on by himself, but. Yep, so, um.
We're just gonna leave it hanging, nobody's gonna second it.
Oh, I'll second it if you want. Will we throw Chuck up there, or Don can take care of this?
I, I don't think you should throw Chuck, he could probably answer some questions, but.
No. Well, what?
Don, Chuck.
Don has some history.
I will have the original article that was voted, I'll have that, um, how much we've spent in the two recycling and, um, and the minutes from the first meeting when we voted this through. The trans, when we created the revolving fund, I'll have the minutes from that, which talked about, um, why it was created, and, um, because the questions come up from the budget committee, um, how long it would take to recoup the car, um, some, the cost of doing the bailer, cause that was some of the questions that have come up. Um, and then how much we've gotten in recycling revenue, um, I may not be able to break it out all the years, but I can break it out a couple, few of the years, so.
Um, and as, as far as, I forget how it works, if you move the question and seconded it, then, do you then ask the person who's gonna speak to it to come up, who's, who's?
Yeah.
Yes. And, and.
Just to defer to them, basically.
I do put the motion, um, in there, so you know what to say, and sometimes.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and then, is that it? Uh, so Article twenty is just, um, is there any specific thank yous that you wanna put, put there, or would you want me to put the thank yous from, in, um, that we put in the town report here instead? And, um, I would also normally put thank you to Les and Carol here.
Yeah, I would.
And the department heads, I guess, would be good, are ready. Anybody else?
Uh, the election people maybe?
Yes, big one.
The group for the election.
Are you welcoming new select board?
Has Ray put Don five seconds?
It doesn't say, this one's, see, you put you there, it doesn't have.
Oh, I do, yeah, sorry.
Next one? It's like, this is, I don't know.
Hi, I was trying to correct one and I may have forgotten to correct the other, so welcome.
I'll be there the whole day.
And I'm gonna be there until twelve, and leaving, so that works out.
Right, that's right, so you'll leave him when I get there, right?
Yeah.
Talking about.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to confirm that too, what, um, with you, uh, cause I told Remma I'd follow up, um, you were there until?
We were one person.
One person, okay.
Yeah.
I'll be there the whole day.
Me too.
Scott, all day, Don Melbourne's the only, I think he'll be there all day, so he was the only one, I wasn't sure, so. Brown all day. I'll find out. We will put the new select board members on here, um, we'll welcome to them, and then let people know they need to be sworn in, they can stop in the game, so.
Just checking the weather for that day, cause it usually smells.
I, I think it would be nice to throw a, a good thank you out to the budget committee.
Yeah.
Too.
Yep. I can break them down better, so.
Fifty-one degrees on Tuesday.
Whoa, nice. That's what you want when you want.
Alright, I'm driving a motor.
Standing outside the.
I had one year, got a foot of snow that day, but the first time I went, but I was the only one out there. Well, I, well, I take that back, me and Tom, he did, we're the only, cause Tom was out there for me, so.
Uh, is there anything else you, um, we're gonna put a table up in the lobby with, um, the community events flyers, job applications, volunteer, if you're interested in volunteering forms, um, um, in case anybody wants to apply for a job or fill out a volunteer form, they can drop, we'll have a box for them to drop it in. And we'll also put, uh, planning, zoning, historical, their flyers that they currently have out there, so it just would be an information table in the lobby, and then the town reports will be in the meeting as you walk in. And then, as far as I know, um, Kate will be meet, Kate's meeting with them next Friday, and, um, Shannon and Deb are going over next Friday, just to make sure we have the tables and chairs and podiums, so.
What about, uh, we don't have refreshments, what are we doing?
We have no refreshments, so it, I guess, um, it's up to the board.
For election day or town meeting?
No, for refreshments for town meeting.
There's a vending machine.
Did we cover election day?
Well, elections is covered, um, I've taken elections, we've already, we've ordered platters.
Well, we're gonna be out of there at eleven o'clock, so nobody's gonna need them.
So, election day, um, Remma's, um, gonna get the coffee in the morning, we're still gonna, town's paying for our coffee and snacks, um, lunch, we've ordered platters already, we're picking up, um, Monday, we're picking up, uh, some dessert, and we're picking up potato chips early, and then we have water already, cases of water. And then, um, we'll order pizza for dinner.
What do you want, cheese and crackers or something, some snack stuff?
Some of the election workers do bring some snack stuff with them that day, but we're not, we weren't going to pull out just a thing of potato chips.
Yep.
Um, and we're doing the platter, we're doing two sandwich platters for lunch, and then we're doing pe- four pizzas for dinner, so.
Is everybody bringing things on their own again this time?
I was gonna bring us two.
Yeah, one or two.
If you, and that would be up to you individually, I don't think we solicited it, but.
We don't have to feed my kids, so I'm not gonna promise you anything.
They, so nobody at the school wants to do anything?
No, last year they said they wouldn't, won't do it this, so they gave us notice last year.
They aren't doing very good with it though.
They did not do good with it last year, um, even on the days like when we're there longer, I don't know how, uh, they really do.
I think it's a very well-intentioned thing, but it just, yeah.
I'll bring my own coffee, bye.
Yep. Will you bring a hearing?
We could bring a hearing, put it behind you on stage.
Wait, sorry, Ned. So, and, but yeah, no babysitting and no food, so, and, um, anything else?
I don't think so.
Think of anything. Are we gonna talk about the eighty-five Lake Street sale, or put that up on a, should we put that up on a slide?
Oh, we're gonna have the last page, around the last page.
Do you want me, do you want me to add it to the last page, well, right before, or?
Right before.
Start on over with, I mean, it's on, yeah. Yeah, but some people won't.
Well, we, technically, we've sold, so technically, we've sold three, but we, I haven't got.
Yeah, people want to load it, yeah.
We told all two properties.
Just put a quick announcement.
Three things with the truck and the two properties, but.
Other truck, yeah. You don't have to put the name, you can just.
Just a quick announcement, some people, if they stay up.
The name of the meeting.
Do you want me just to put it in the, wh- as people are walking in, cause we're gonna have that other one, we're gonna have the longer pictures, what?
I don't think some people even look at that.
Well, that's their problem.
No, I think, I think it's good, I think it's really good.
Alright, we're doing pictures and rec, and small recognitions in the first one, I won't put it in that one, but maybe.
Whatever you want, let's move on to the TA report.
Put it, put it somewhere with a number, but not with the names, do you think, I don't think the names even do it.
Right.
Yeah.
No, just the property.
Well, it's all public information.
It's all public information, so it doesn't matter.
But just the final, you don't need to put all of the bits up.
People wanna know what the number was.
Yep.
Yeah. How much money?
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And your meetings might be shorter now that I'm gonna be on, just sort of.
No, time will tell.
It depends on who gets on.
Time will tell.
Oh, um, employee, employee recognition, Bristol's thankful for the employees who celebrated March anniversary date for joining the Bristol team, we're very thankful for their years of continued service, Fire Department Cristal of twenty-seven years, and then Town Credit Selectors Office, Cheryl Herbert, three years.
Thank you.
Um, Water Department, um, they would, um, send out a thank you on Facebook, and I thought it was a nice touch, um, Water Department staff would like to thank all the folks who helped keep, helped them keep the fire hydrants clear snow this winter, your efforts are very much appreciated, they have people who, um, helped them out, and it's been, it's been a godsend for them, so. Um, where did I put that? Um, Newfound Pathways has sent in a, somewhere, Newfound Pathways has sent in a notice that their organization is closing, um.
Sorry, just got all confused on that, I was thinking Penny Path.
I know.
They had a press release in the paper.
Did they put it in the paper?
Yeah, I read it somewhere, Newfound, like, or online, can't remember where, so.
Here it is, I think they sent it to, to, um, so Newfound Pathways, um, said, dear town selectmen, this is a sad time for the path, Newfound Pathways, and we need to inform you of our closing of our organization, thank you for all the support you have given us over the past sixteen years. We still feel it is important mission for the Newfound Lake Roads and community, and we sincerely hope that you will put some priority in the safety of the roads for pedestrians and for outdoor community that love using the roads and trails around the lake. It's important to encourage our community to be out enjoying nature, walking and other sports for, for health and happiness. Excuse me, it is getting less safe for activities to happen with the added population and cars on our road. There's a second part, it must be, is their pre- that's their press release, it's in your.
Did they just get tired of burying their heads against the wall of the state?
I think it said some people are retired.
I think that, that's a lot of it for them, but, um. My TA report that I just lost. Okay, um, unofficial ratio notice, or equalization ratio is, um, what that is, is how close we are, um, on our, about assessment values to the market. Um, so we know that we've been under, um, for a while, this year we are doing a reevaluation, um, and we just wanted to let the board know that we've been notified that our median ratio for twenty twenty-four is fifty point eight percent. Yep, um, we did ask the assessor to review the decision, and she has, and there's no errors, so we've submitted back, we've let the state know that we don't have any, we don't disagree with their findings. Um, one key thing to note is the second page, so, um, I wanted to point out to the board, wrong one. So it should say unofficial median ratio, it's the, if you look at that, the first page, it lists out other ratios, but if you go to the second page of that document, it tells you, um, cer- it tells you what certain areas of town are at right now, preliminary, preliminary, is that word?
Preliminary?
Thank you. Um, so like, for instance, if you were looking at this, so there are different ratios here, and they're used for different things, for assessment purposes, we use it, the median ratio, so I can pull it up.
Excuse me, which, which document are you on?
Here, it, it's in your type TA report discussion materials, it's the unofficial.
Reevaluation facts, no?
No, this one.
Uh.
Ratio. Unofficial ratio.
Wait, 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 wait.
I put it up on screen, so if you wanna look there, you can.
Under, under information or under discussion?
Discussion. Yep.
Trick me again.
I don't know. It's a mess. So.
Got it, I'm there, I'm there, I can do this.
I, I, one of the reasons I'm bringing this, um, kinda bringing this up is because it does clear, it, I think, over the time, we've kind of thought that it's just the lake, um, or not just the lake, but average had, we thought that the majority was the lake, um, and this clearly shows it's not just the lake.
No.
Um, so it's, um, waterfront, multifamily, two to four units, they're forty-six percent, single residential condo units are forty-six percent, water access fifty-three percent, any and all, which is like, oh, um, that's the true average, which is the fifty point eight that I have in your folder. And then area of improved residential, this isn't like the full strata, but this gives you the basics, um, so it is across, it, it isn't just one area that, um.
Everybody's assessment's gonna go up, and everybody's tax rate's gonna go down.
Yes.
You guys can claim you lowered the tax rate.
So.
Yeah, yes.
You lowered the tax rate, but you didn't look, in reality, it's gonna walk, the tax bill's gonna stay the same, if you did any work, unfortunately, um, your bill would go out, but, depending on what you did, but, but I wanted to put that up there.
Okay, next.
Elections, already talked about that, we did update, um, stuff on the website, um, TAN, the tax anticipation note that we had taken, um, we did just pay it back, you should have seen that in the manifest, um, so, um, we paid it back and we reduced it to zero, we have not closed it out, we won't earn any more interest on it, but we left it open, but, um, just in case, um, we needed it. Um, the maturity date is November twenty-second, so we can borrow up to November, we can borrow up to October, November, but we have to pay it off by November twenty-second. If we end up needing, um, uh, TAN at the, towards the end of the year, because, um, revow is going to push the tax rate out, setting out, um, then we would have to start to process over and reapply for a TAN. Which would, it really, you, you just have to come in and sign forms if that happens, and we have to pay a five hundred dollar document fee again, so. But we just wanted you to know we paid it back, um, and they are keeping it open until it matures, so. Uh, town credit card, we have found in the board that the town credit card update, um, you should also see a check for Citizens Bank, um, that is to open the account, that is, that will still be general fund money, it will just be general fund money at Citizens Bank, um, and we'll be able to get the town, the credit cards set up and out of certain people's names. Just in time.
I was just saying what, just leave it out.
Yeah. So, the two credit cards that we have are mine and another person's, um, and they, um, we haven't been able to close one out, because we couldn't get anybody on the board willing to.
Sorry.
So.
That's why my creditor tour came back that way. I forgot all about that.
It's not supposed to touch your, your credit, but, so, we've been pushing to get this, this new town credit card, cause it won't be, you won't have to tie it to a social security number, which doesn't reform, but I still don't like it. Um, and it does, and we'll be able to issue them with limits, which we have gone through and set limits, so, um, fridge department, and each department head, not each, most department heads will be able to have this credit card to use, so that when they're purchasing at La Valley's or Obashan's, it's easier, um, and those bills come straight to us, we're, we're not always getting the bills from Obashan or La Valley's, are you in trouble? Sorry.
Sorry, it's all good.
And I talked to it and told it to not behave to you, cause this was your last meeting.
It's nicely done.
So, um, we are one step closer, um, we should be closing these, and, and the limit on these two credit cards, these two credit cards are shared, so it's fifteen hundred dollars, and you don't get very far when you have Adobe billing to it every month, and, um, MailChimp billing to it every month, so it doesn't really last very long, so.
We lost some numbers.
Um.
It's all good.
In the information only folder and on your desk, there's the twenty twenty-three audit, um, if you have any specific questions about it, let me know, um, I just leave that there, um.
I had a question about the letter.
The governance letter?
No, the report final letter, wait.
That's the, the governance letter, we can't, we don't post up, are you, um, but, let me go find it.
Uh, you're talking about it non-public, then?
So the, um, you, if there's, no, you can ask a question.
Uh, I gotta find it.
Sorry. Alright, you're talking about the twenty twenty-three GOV letter, it's in the TA report folder, it's not in any folder, it's just in, yep.
You sent it to us today.
Yep.
Um.
I see.
It was something about how unauthorized use of bond funds, page four.
Yes.
I had a problem with that, I, I, I didn't, I thought we were all good when we did it.
No. We should probably talk about that non-public.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, we should talk about that in non-public.
Alright.
We, every, so everything that's listed in this governance letter, by the way, um, outside of the audit, um, all the most, the, all but the assets, which has been carried over for ten years, it's that capital assets project, it's been in the audit for, I don't know how many years, that's the only thing we haven't been able to address and correct. Everything else has been addressed or corrected, um, and, um, all of the adjustments have been made as well, so.
Alright.
Um, there, I. There, I, sorry, I have more.
Six more, thanks.
I didn't tell you six more.
It's early yet.
I did think this was, this is a nice document. It's also not in either of your, it's in your TA report folder. It says 2114 on it. Ran out of time, so this is why you're seeing this stuff like this. The 2114, it tells you what the collection summary is at. It tells you the oldest year that owes taxes, and it tells you what our total outstanding taxes are right now, which I thought was an interesting report. Our oldest year is 2014. We know that property. It's on my goal to get that property resolved this year. So, but probably fourteen through, fourteen through like eighteen, nineteen, it's all those years. That property is in all of those years, but I think the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen are probably just attributed to that property.
Which one are you looking at? The 2114, do I hear what you said?
Yep.
So, just look at it. These, these years.
Oh, okay, got it. Thank you.
Cool. The same property, but the property's...
It tells, so it tells you the warrant years, and it tells you how much is owed in taxes. And then, I really thought it was an interesting fact that the only outstanding taxes from 2014 through the end of '24 is five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. It's been higher than that before, so I thought it was a good, something to share with the board, so. And again, if we resolve that one property, a good ten thousand, actually, over twenty thousand will come off this, so. Ignore the Baptist Church deed because it's being redone again. Composting survey for participating communities.
Can I go back to the...
Oh, yeah.
Why is it being redone? Did someone have a discrepancy?
She had to make one more change to it. Yeah, we met with him. Were you here for that meeting?
Good.
This is what I've just gotten back. I mean, I haven't gotten all of the documents back yet. So, I have to fix... Actually, you can certainly look at the red wording and see if you're okay with that. I just love to fix the signature lines, and then I have to go in and add the plans, and I just want to reread it again, but I don't have all the documents still from the attorney. But that is the change from, are you good with that? Thank you for pointing that out, Scott.
Yeah, I think that's still to discuss if we, if they were...
Yep. If you're good with that, I'm gonna send this, that deed without all the change. I am gonna send it to him, letting him know I've gotta fix signature lines and the plan, but at least that'll get the wording reviewed by the church. There is the mortgage indemnification agreement. That's the only other document that I've gotten from the attorney. We're still working on the MOUs and easement, but the mortgage indemnification is just the one. There was that outstanding mortgage on the parsonage way, way back, and they have minutes that say it was discharged. It just was never officially discharged, and the bank doesn't exist anymore. So, this just says that if ever comes back up again, the church is responsible for it, so. So, I have two more documents coming from the attorney, and then we should be, as long as everything's agreeable, we should be signing and closing.
And the church already agreed to have that language in there about the responsibility from the deed.
Yes.
All right. I just want to make sure there's no more surprises.
Okay. Composting survey for participating communities. Lakes Region Planning Commission would like to come to the transfer station to do a survey. I talked to Chuck. We think it's a good idea, but we don't want them to be in the transfer station. We'd rather put them out either by closer to Wellsfield where the kids, I don't know if they can do that in winter, but where they sled, but we wanted to make sure the board was okay with that before we do. They did get awarded the composting grant, and they are going, the grant will allow to help fund ten thousand dollars of composting tumblers for interested residents. So, they want to start with talking to people and do the survey, if you're okay with that. This is, the LUCT billings, you signed those tonight. You signed most of those tonight. Some aren't already signed, but we thought it was nice to point out that there are one, two, three, four, five of them. The Conservation Commission was notified. It's a total of fifty-one thousand, forty-one dollars, and fifty percent of that will go to the Conservation Commission. So, obviously, town's been active with building or breaking, doing things over the past year or two, and this is the result of that. These properties are taking portions of their property out of current use. Well, they're not taking, they've changed their property, and we're taking it out of current use, so. The one that's labeled Penny Path, I reached out, there was a concern from...
TAN?
TAN, yeah, Army Corps. And, but I've alleviated her concern. I did tell her we would reevaluate it if we needed to, so she was good. We did put the, there's a revow news release out there that we've shared out on the town's website. It tells, going in hand with the ratio, but it talks about the steps, the phases, so the public understands that. Phase one, two, three, and four. And then, it also includes a frequently asked question about town property tax revaluation. So, those are all on the website. I believe we put, we may have put them in the buzz. If we didn't, we'll make sure they are. Okay. Road vans, that's just to notify you. The state's also putting their weight limit restrictions. These are the lists of the roads. They just send us everything, but it just affects our state roads. And they go into effect March, so town roads are already into effect, and then state roads went into effect on March fourth, which is Rush Shore Road. And I thought, I think that's it. That affects Bristol, right?
It's supposed to be on North Shore Road on there.
Oh, is it, is it on there?
What's that?
It's not in Bristol, but they send us the whole list, so it brought us in here. Fowler River Road. Oh, Fowler River Road.
This is page two.
Yep. There's page two. Yeah, they have thirty-five roads, but this is everything from...
Can't get the Groton commercial vehicle right now.
Nope. Bike and call. The roads are a mess, though. They wrote, even talking about frost eaves. Shore Drive Stormwater Group update. This is good news. NLRA has been able to shift the funding in their current watershed assistant grant to invest in an engineering study and plans for Shore Drive. We, if you, this stormwater group, we agreed to be a member of it in the past year, and it was a stakeholders group that meant to talk about the water issues on Shore Drive. So, they have engaged Steamworks, a New Hampshire-based engineering firm that specializes in complex stormwater issues, to work with them on the project and to conduct a more thorough watershed survey and develop a preliminary list of options to better manage the stormwater impacting the Shore Drive neighborhood. Work should begin soon, and will wrap up in late spring, and then the stakeholders group, which was myself, and we're supposed to be Carol or Don, so I can, as long as one of you, Don will continue.
I'll stay if you want to keep me on that, if, that's okay. You don't have to, but I'm willing to stay on that. The only worry I have is, well, so the watershed survey that's going to be done will not come through us, and it won't be, it won't be approved, but the type of survey and the questions asked aren't going to be approved by the select board.
They're paying for it, and they're hiring them.
I have concerns about private citizens and that we aren't indicating we're invading people's privacy. I don't, I have concerns about how it's gonna be done.
So, because we would not be, we wouldn't be paying anything out.
I understand.
Even when we, if there is a problem with the stormwater, this is all people's private yards.
We're part of this group, and it could be, I... Am I making any sense? I have worries about how it would be perceived. Well, no, it's not perceived, but again, I've had this conversation in the Lake Water Study Group where people say, "We have to make people tell us about their septic systems." Like, no, actually, we don't.
There is a representation from these associations on Shore Drive that come to the stakeholder group too, but I, we can certainly reach back out to NLRA.
We should be involved in formulation of the survey, I think, even if they pay for it. Believe me, it's a great thing. It's a, it's a good thing to do something down there.
All right.
Okay. Just to give you, we, in the Snapchat picture, we did, a couple of weeks ago, did, right after the Select Board meeting, did hit one of the lamps, and it was so cold, it busted off. Not funny.
We hit it?
Yep.
This week?
Our town.
Our town.
Hit it. Yep. And the witness that saw it, it was such a light tap, and it just snapped it off. So, we did take it out of there, we sealed over. The problem that we've had with the claim is because we've modified these lights when we did the new light, when we put the affinity lighting in, so I can't just replace, it's all one piece. So, we did, we did reach out to a company that welds, and they are able to do a clean weld and guarantee it's a safe weld. And so, we are working with them to do that because we can't just replace the unit. Like I said, we cut them off and put the new lighting on, so.
They're kind of like, what do you call it? They're not steed, they're not, well, they're steel, but what do you used to call it?
Cast.
Cast, and they break easily.
And given the cold temperatures, I'm sure.
Ben and I are attending the Lakes Region Chamber annual meeting next week. Anybody else is welcome to attend. It does cost, but... I'm gonna find that first page, sorry. So, we've been invited to attend because the Public Safety Building has been nominated for an award.
Same awards we...
What? No, that award was given out in Vegas.
The concrete award? The concrete award?
In Vegas, yep.
You would have selected, you would have...
It was the week after, too. Lakes Region Chamber.
You just want to vote, yeah. You just want to vote simply the award.
Yeah, I know. So, the, let me just open this here. It's at the Cake Theater. It's the 2025 Lakes Region Chamber Annual Meeting and Awards. I was trying to tell you what we were nominated for, but none of this stuff is being very cooperative. So, Ben thinks he's challenged. We were nominated for a Business Innovation Award. It doesn't mean that we're going to win the award, but we did think it would be good to represent, and I told Ben he has to use speech if we win. I said, "I would like to go to this, and I think it's a good opportunity, but I don't want to speak." So, there's like network, we would network too with people, so Ben and I are gonna go. So, if anybody else is interested, there is a fee. I can register you. But it was a little bit more than, so. But it is a neat opportunity if we do get the award. Even if we don't get the award, it's a neat opportunity to be nominated for it, so. So, it says, "We are in to connect, engage, and honor outstanding achievements," so.
All right.
I think that's it, but I will, what is that? Can I reserve the right to?
So, that's a parallel to your award. Select Board, I have a Scott.
I guess I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving with you two over the past two years. I wish you the best of luck in the future, and I'm sure we'll see you around town and in the meeting, so you'll come visit us. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks.
Carol?
I went to the planning board as a substitute. Most of the meeting was taken up with the discussion of the master plan, land use piece of the master plan, which everyone there was quite pleased with. It seems like it's come together very well. We had a couple of comments for the, the person who was writing it that they're gonna take back and make some changes, so that was good.
Pardon me?
I had started working on, as I have been complaining about this for three years, I started working on the idling policy this week, and I started working on the smoking policy. I would volunteer to bring those to you within a couple of months as a, with a draft of changes for them, if you would like me to continue on that. Conservation Commission, oh, we are almost, we had the last draft in the lake water quality study, let me back up a bit. Pike's Point Association came to Conservation Commission because of the concern about sedimentation in Gramps slash Bobs Cove, that it's gotten worse, and you can't even get a kayak or a good, down the back corner anymore. And they actually hired a consultant to start doing some work on it. So, they came to us with concerns that, can the town start moving towards some potential land use solutions to lessen the impact? They were talking about dredging too, but that's, that's on there. You know, that's a conversation that they were just...
So, they're talking wish list towards Pike's Point Road there?
Yeah, up into the, so from the south, south of...
The south side of Pike's Point.
Where Hemlock Brook comes in. There was a lot of conversation that it's been that way for years, but it seems like it's getting worse, and now they can't get boats in, et cetera, et cetera. It was a great conversation, and we told them that much of what the Lake Water Quality Study Report is going to say is what they were coming to ask us to take some emphasis on. So, I think that when that's done in the next month, maybe we'll get it to you next month or probably the following month, that that will give the Select Board an idea of how to move ahead with some of these things that are concerning the lake. So, it was a good, we, if you have anything to add, Sean, please, feel free.
One of the key points that came up that we were talking about and had talked about at the town level before, but haven't had an opportunity to do anything really about it, is are, are our culverts adequately sized? And the culverts that we, that get put in on private driveway developments uphill of the lake, you know, are they adequately sized? And that's a point source, point source pollution. You can point to that, and it's, it's an actual spot that you can point to and say, that's not why they call it that, but you can point to it and say, "This is having an effect downstream every time a culvert washes out, or culverts are perched, and then you have a waterfall effect, and it scours out, or changes to the book happen that make, that make water find its own way. And when that does, you get a significant amount of sediment downstream." So, it goes back to a comment I had, I had said before leaving the board last time, is, you know, we need to look at our ditches and culverts, and instead of, you know, rebuild them to the quote-unquote new reality that, you know, you have, you have bigger storms, more... rebuild them to the quote unquote new reality that, you know, you have, you have bigger storms, more frequent storms.
And I did mention that we had just talked about this, the culverts, a couple of meetings ago. So we seem to be on the same page there.
A lot of what they were asking was out of the hands of the select board. It was all, it was land use stuff, you know, more restrictive deep slope stuff, stuff like that. And it would come through, planning zoning amendments, planning amendments, I guess, zoning amendments.
Yeah. When the Conservation Commission brings you the Lake Water Quality Study, we can push the agenda on that a little more. I think it's important. A lot of it is, is MLRA recommendations from years past. And it's just kind of got to put in the drawer because there's not enough people to take care of. But I think it's things that we need to do, so that will come to you. But it was great that they came and they came to a meeting and we told them it was the right place to go to Conservation Commission and we can start working together, maybe putting together a, an ad hoc task force for that area or even for the, for the, the land use piece of, around the lake. So that was good that they came. It was really good, I thought.
Have you guys done a recent water quality test in the spring?
Yes. Yep. So your last one was fine. Okay. Yeah.
I think we posted it today too on the website. Carol, before you leave no idling, I did talk to a former employee and did confirm on the no idling signs that the town did install, almost probably installed them all. The former employee did, so if the board chose to remove those signs in the future, you could, but my only comment would be the ones that were put up like at school, we probably should talk to the school before removing them. But any of the ones on town property were put up by the town.
So I'll, I'll come to you with some research and a little bit of conversation about the goods and bads and the things that we need to decide without, without, if, if, if that's good. Leave the signs for now.
Okay. There you go.
Yes, Gramps Cove. The Conservation Commission has been talking, we have talked about doing some more sampling around the shallow waters of the lake. NLRAs, years of sampling is typically out in the central portions.
Yeah.
Or right at the tributaries where they come in, not at the culverts and not, not around the foot of the lake. And we talked about, so that should start to be done. And they, now somebody said at the meeting that they're going to talk about doing that, but right at that meeting. But I haven't heard that from.
They said that they were trying to get MLRA to do that and had been unsuccessful.
Right. So whether the Conservation Commission can take that as a project, because now we have a little money in the current use payback, to, to assuage some of the concerns of the citizenry, that will come in. I think that'll be part of the Lake Water Quality Study Report also. But I think that you guys, as of moving forward, should consider the town maybe doing some of that. And certainly, you know, I did, you have a gentleman there that's done years of sampling with MLRA volunteer and I can do anything that we need for no charge, so, because that, that gets expensive. One of their, one of, one of their complaints is a lot of sediment comes in and it has to be contaminated. Now, I'm translating. It probably is contaminated and you know, who knows what to those sediments and from, 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 again, the brook. Whatever the name of that thing is.
Yeah, but what about the creek that's on the south side of Pike's Point that comes across by the.
And they talked about the one, that's the one that comes off somewhere by Red. So I, I don't know that, you, you sample the sediments, you're always going to find a little bit of oil and grease, but you know, that, that's much more expensive sampling than just water samples. So moving forward, between the Lake Water Quality Study and that group, I think it's time to start really doing some land use zoning, planning changes to manage the lake a little bit. That's it. That's all I got. Yeah, that's it.
For sure?
I do have more, but I'll eat some.
I, I would just say it's been an honor to be on here. It's, I have had it very, very good in three years. You know, I would never have considered doing this because everybody said, who would be a select person? It's such a terrible job. It's been, actually, the, the boards, all three years have been fantastic and the job has been, it's been, it's been a pleasure to be here. So, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Les?
There is the mud season next, or 20th, Saturday, the 20th. At the Old Town Hall, Clumsordah, Homestead, we'll do the fire setup and there'll be light snacks. So seven to 10, I think, or seven, I think it's seven to 10, seven thirty to 10:30. It's on, on the website too, but it should be a good time, so. The events committee's putting that on. And then just, it's, this is bittersweet. I've really enjoyed being on the select board. Enjoyed all the different people you get to work with over the years, so I will miss you guys. But it's, it's been my pleasure.
Enjoy having your clearcy nights right now.
I know, they're not looking good.
Oh, Les has got some open times.
She's free now.
The only thing I get is voting on Tuesday and town meeting on Saturday. Come on out and vote, make your voice heard. And once again, thank you to Carol and Les. It's been an absolute pleasure, so.
Thank you.
Pretty pumped to see you guys go, so.
I know.
Never know.
Maybe.
So. Public comments, Paul, Sean, Kay.
I had a couple. Christina, if you could or would email me the specifics on the, the tree planting situation.
Oh, the quote, yeah.
I would be happy to speak towards that at town meeting.
That's going to be a 30 minute speech.
We did add a Christmas tree.
Okay.
So, but I have the quote, so I can.
Yeah, we can both kind of. Yeah, just to back, I'm not to speak on the amendment, but just to back it up. Yeah, that'd be great. On the floor. As you mentioned, we're going to have a revow this year, a full revow. One thing I, one thing I've seen on all of the community pages in the area, towns have gone through that, is start early and start often in getting the word out about the revow and what it means. Your value of your house will go up. There's no question about it. We're totally undervalued. It does not mean your taxes go up. When you say, when you get a letter and say, you know, my tax is doubled. No, your value doubled and the rate is going to go down significantly. You need to get that message out really, really soon and really often. That there will be people around and, and looking at properties.
Hopefully some of them. Very, very simple and plain English. That's not, that's not an insult to anybody. It's just so that people that don't normally handle it understand it.
It's a lot to understand.
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, weekly on the, weekly on the, on the page, every episode of the Buzz.
Yeah, Christine's got a pretty good FAQ sheet. I don't know if we, I don't think you touched on it, but I saw.
I mentioned, I thought, I thought it was posted. I didn't see it attached there. I'll take that while, so make sure.
Buzz, the papers.
The Facebook is pretty, the program that can, I can go in and, he goes in and programs them ahead. So like for the bidding, I programmed them for the whole time it was open and picked what dates they were going and changed it to say, today's closing, so, so I can make sure I do some of that.
Speaking of that, maybe it's good to have a post that the selectmen took a high bid of, just, because there's been so much on it.
Yep.
Sure, that'll generate some conversation.
Yeah.
Why didn't we do this? Why did you do that?
I liked the one that said, just sell it already. Stop asking us what we want.
I know.
Bidding is literally in the.
We didn't ask, that was the.
I, I liked the one that said, just burn it. I'm like, okay, majority of it's brick.
I think that's.
Dishes that were added afterwards, that's.
Only combustible in there, I think.
Paul?
I, I guess, Les, I don't know if you shared with the select board our discussion on, the budget committee's discussion on potential warrant articles. And I forget the number, but the one about the energy committee refund with $10,000 in it. So I guess you guys weren't there, but I was surprised. So I sat down as a candidate and Brittany said, it's the only thing that's not unanimous. Why did anyone vote no? And then I had to say, well, I'm one of the two people that voted no and I can't speak for anyone else. But I said, did we hire a lawyer and gave him bonus for using multi-syllable confusing words? I said, I'm not convinced it's not a good idea, but I'm certainly not convinced that it's a good idea. And, and Paul Beemus was in the audience and I said, but I said, so I wanted the voters to know that this to me is an off slam dunk. I need to hear more. Not saying I'll, I'll vote against it at town meeting, but I'm expecting somebody to get up and give a lot more information because just reading those words, I get confused halfway through it and I think I'm a smart guy. So I just kind of want to share that with you. I don't know if we can, in general, try to simplify things. I know the state has requirements and we got to work with lawyers, but that one is, to me, a great example of a horrible strength of words. And, and I, and I, and I, after the meeting was over, Paul Beemus came up to me and I, so I said, yeah, I'm looking forward to standing up at town meeting and really trying to explain this because the set of words just didn't do it for me.
And hopefully that'll generate some discussion that might bring up some questions or answers that will clarify some of that too, so.
I'll add some more stuff on this page too, so.
Kay?
I have more. I reserve the right.
In public or non-public?
Public. In public, right, right. Just, I just wanted to make sure everybody, there was an error in the school ballots, so it delayed us a little bit. We ended up working out, in order for us to get those, some of the ballots out. It was a million dollar error, Carol, wasn't it?
A little over, yeah.
Yeah, and so it was a million dollar less error. It was, but actually they had to change the ballots and put a million dollars into the number, but it was the correct number from, we did compare it and it was the correct number from their deliberative session. They just printed it wrong, so they had to have them reprint it, so.
And, and that means that the absentee ballots will be on a piece of paper because it wasn't time to redo the official ballots.
Some of them were, yes, they got permission to do that with the Secretary of State's office, but the new ballots have come in since then.
Okay.
They, there are audit questionnaires for the 2024 audit. The auditors are coming in April. I didn't remember to bring them tonight, but I can, I email them out to each of you and just have you respond or would you prefer just one person do them? So the audit questionnaires are, in the past, we've had just the chair do them. So they are, this is the select board questionnaire. Answers questions, do you acknowledge of any fraud or suspicious suspicions of fraud? So I can email that out and have each of you do it or it's up to you. So I just want, I, we want to have it prepared before the auditors come.
Last, I think last year I did it.
I don't remember doing it. I've never, I only.
Yeah.
I know, I, I know I did it. I just can't remember if it was just me or not.
I think it was just you.
Couldn't it be down in the meeting that you just do it together or?
Well, like, so it's this group or it's the new group? So do you want to do it really quick? I mean, it's up to you.
Just do it with the, do it with the new group.
Yeah, okay, new group. I'll bring it to that meeting.
It's very reductive.
We take no responsibility whatsoever.
It's extremely redundant.
It is.
Nothing you want to.
That's not public. This is not public. This is on the page. Did we want to talk about the, the bank? It is public. She, we've been advised it is public. But do you want us to share that out? Might as well.
Sure. It's brought into the town, so.
So we have just received information, we met with the TD Bank today. TD Bank, and TD Bank is closing this building.
No.
And so the status of the building is, is not, there's no, no answers yet, but we have talked to them about it because, two things we talked to them about, we talked to them about, because TD Bank is our financial bank, the closest bank for us to do deposits is Tilton. They are keeping Tilton open. They're closing three in New Hampshire, five, eight in Massachusetts, and I don't know how many in Maine. This has been a decision that they've been discussing for two years. It was, it was a difficult decision for them and for the employees at this location. We've talked to them about the building as well because we're concerned about, they would be closing, this building is a June fifth, and we're concerned, this is our downtown. We'd hate to see a building sitting there empty in the downtown, especially as prominent as that building is. They've done an extensive amount of renovations on that building. I think that they are going to be selling it, I just don't know how quickly. The, but they, they don't, they want everybody to continue to be customers with them, including the town. And then we're going to, we have to review everything that they've offered to us in order to keep us as a customer and come back to the board, the treasurer and the board to make a decision what we want to do to move forward. We have a very short window to move forward and we need to make changes in that short window, depending on what we decide, so. But for public, they want to, they do want to alleviate concerns with public. They are not closing all of their facilities. They're going to continue to be TD Bank and they're going to continue to offer services. It's just not going to be in downtown Bristol anymore, so.
I think maybe it'd be nice just to say how awesome that bank has been and the employees, especially the current employees have been phenomenal, so it's, it's really sad to see that go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully another bank will go in and they can find employment there. Hopefully it's my bank.
Water and Sewer has just done, with DES has required us and to, there was a lead service line inventory requirement. If we did not know if a line was lead or not, we had to send letters. There was a miscommunication, the letters should have gone out already. We thought it was a small amount of letters. It turned into a thousand letters. Those have gone out this week. And so we had done, we, if people are going to get these, they can certainly call Water and Sewer if they have any questions. It's just notifying either, we either don't know what this line is that feeds you or your property does have a lead and to be aware of it. And it's a two-page letter that DES, Department of Environmental Services has provided to us and we tweaked it in order to match what we need to say. But those have all gone out this week and people should be receiving them if they haven't already, so.
Does the service line go to the shut off or does it go to the meter in the house? Or to the wall?
I think they all have shut offs.
No, I'm saying, how much is the town's?
Oh, to the shut off. Ours is to the shut off, but we have to notify people because they may want to change, they approve their lines as.
But by definition, the service line is our piece to the shut off.
Yeah. So the other thing that's come up in this is, so we have to notify, we had to notify everybody by a certain time. Then we have to submit all service line updates by November 1st, 2025 to DES to let them know and update the reporting. On going through November 1st, 2027, you have to continue identification of unknown service lines by reviewing historical records, performing inspections, requesting homeowners to self-report and report information in your, there's a template that they give us. As new, they, by abbreviations, I don't know what, GRR or lead services? What is GRR? Are identified, I think it's, I don't know. Do you think they think we are, a GRR line single, it must be some type of line. But it says, are identified, notify homeowners of decreased potential for lead exposure or request they participate as a, as a LCR compliance site. If accepted, submit sampling updates to DW Monitoring, which is DES. If accepted, submit sampling updates to D W Monitoring, which is D E S. And then funding, low interest loans with principal forgiveness are currently available on a first-come, first-served basis through the bipartisan infrastructure law for both service line inventory efforts and service line replacements. Authority to borrow is required, and construction work is subject to environmental review. Right now, that we're only at the letter stage, we just don't know what the next stages are gonna be, but I'll have Jeff and talk to the board as when we get those, more information.
There can't be that.
It's a galvanized G R.
Thank you.
I mean, there can't be that, I mean, even when I was working for Water, it was copper. Seven, eight, seven, any new services were copper.
I think we're gonna find out some of our unknowns are not that, but because we had unknowns, we had to put, we had to send those letters out.
Galvanized required replacement.
I do looked it up.
Galvanized required, is there some, is there some release of lead from Galvez?
Yeah, it says it can, it can collect lead, and then if the water chemistry changes.
In the Galvez project?
Yeah.
I think the rest is a non-public. I will let you know your next March twentieth meeting, for those who are there. There will be a, a non-public, there's some tentative new hires on the fire department, hopefully. We do have, I am scheduling a work session to talk about the planning and scheduling for the year. I've got a list of things that, to put on there, and if you have anything, even Carol or Les, that you think we should add, let me know. There are things like one we can, what ordinance we're gonna work on this year, so we can get them done, or we're gonna have, when we're gonna have the employee barbecue, mandatory training, I just want to try and plan the year out as much as possible. You will also have your election of officers, appointments to committee, and you will have a promotion. We just, we're having a lieutenant promotion come in, first wearing an apron. And you will have the Bristol Water wrap-up meeting for the asset management presentation, sorry.
Okay, make a motion to go into non-public. Session pursuant to.
Good night, girls.
N R S A ninety-one, A three, two, A, B, and C. Second.
Motion by Carol, second by Scott, and to go to non-public, roll, roll, scroll.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Les.
Aye.
Rob.